Hello, today is August 3rd, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM. And we are calling this meeting to order. Mr. Billingsley?
Councilwoman Hughes?
Here.
Here, okay. Councilwoman Cordez? Absent. Councilwoman Larson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wall?
Here.
Councilman Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson, I'm sorry.
I'm here too.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you so much. At this time, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, excellent. Give me one moment, my computer's just having a slight technical difficulty.
Becky, has somebody knocking on your door?
Yes, probably my granddaughter, she's trying to get in.
We're gonna go ahead and open up call to the public, call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Mr. Billingsley, has anybody contacted us?
Madam Mayor, no one has contacted me. Trenton, has anybody tried to contact you through the portal?
No, sir, I have not been contacted by the community.
No contacts, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we'll go ahead and close call to the public. Item number six is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to enter into a contract with Zumar Industries Incorporated to purchase various street warning and informational signs, as well as polls and poll accessories for all signage within the town of Florence in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Item B is approval to enter an agreement for professional services with the Watts guys utilizing direct selection in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Item C is approval of accepting improvements to the Anthem Merrill Ranch Unit 35B and starting the warranty period effective August 3rd, 2020. Item D is approval of the assignment and transfer of the Communications and Internet of Things Services Agreement between the Town of Florence and Melander, Inc. to IOT Advent, Inc. And item E is approval of accepting the register of demands ending June 30th, 2020 in the amount of $3,101,808.78. Ladies and gentlemen, is your consent agenda, is there anybody that would like anything removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All of them same sign. Machine carries. Item number seven is our manager's report. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, I have a number of items this evening, so this may take me a few minutes, so please bear with me. First off, with respect to the manager's report, I have some very good news to report, and I'm sure that the vice mayor is quite excited. About two years ago, after the conference, the vice mayor sat down with me in my office and said, "Look, are you aware of the grants that APS would be providing for solar? I think that we ought to apply." As a matter of fact, the vice mayor put in an interest, I don't even know what to call it, but an interest submission to APS. We ended up filing an application for that solar program, and we're not funded. And last week, we got a call from APS, and they said, as you know, they did the solar project at the Penau County Courthouse. That was the big project that they did in Penau County last year. I believe they had funded five projects statewide, and our project happened to be at the Penau County Courthouse. So they called us last week and said, "Hey, one of the five dropped out at the last minute. We've already bought the poles, the panels, the controls, all of the supplies, and we need somebody that is willing and able to sign the necessary agreements and start construction as soon as possible." This grant was required as part of the ACC rate case, the last APS rate case, as a special program. So we let APS know that we were very interested, and that we could move quite quickly with respect to that grant. And they are actually coming out, bringing their electricians out this week to survey our facilities. The great news on this particular project is, they will own it, they will maintain it, and it will not be directly connected to our system. It'll be connected outside of our system. That's a really good thing. So not only will we get free cover parking, but we're gonna get rebates on our electrical bills for the next 20 years. So it's, we're the beneficiaries, somebody else's losses are gained. So that's the first thing, I'm pretty excited to kind of talk about that. On partnerships and relationships, this is-
Which parking lot, why don't you put that in, Brent?
Right in front of the library.
Okay.
So it will be half of the front row where the ADA spaces are, the full second row and half of the third row.
Good deal.
Pretty good size array.
Thank you.
That's the easiest place for them to install it, and when we built that facility, we put conduit in the ground for future solar. So it works great for them being able to move quickly and get a project done without doing a bunch of damage. So that's, it's a good thing. Any other questions?
No.
The next one, I'm quite excited to talk about as well. We were contacted by the United Food Bank about two months ago, and they said, "Listen, we're not going to do food banks in Florence anymore for these reasons," had a discussion, and we said, "No, very much needed, especially during these times. Tell us where your shortcomings are, and we'll work hard as a community to try to fulfill those shortcomings." They shared with us where their issues were, and it had to do with some food storage in this area, as well as assistance with distribution. We, together, meaning the town and the school district and a number of other entities, got together and tried to figure out a way to best do this. I asked Chief Walls to take the lead on this, because Chief Walls at the time was working on building a coalition between the different churches in the community, and I thought that this would be a very good community building project for the community as a whole. In a very short amount of time, a storage site has identified, we have a long list of volunteers, and we had our first food distribution as a community last Friday. It went way beyond everybody's expectations, including United Food Bank's expectations. We got food out to 200 food boxes in need, and there's 100 more that were identified that were needed post-Friday, and United Food Bank is gonna come down, and through our partners with the ministerial community, we're gonna get those other 100 food boxes out. We had volunteers come from, two people came from Tucson to help us. Two members of the Apache Junction Food Bank came to help us and drove down from Apache Junction. We had a whole bunch of community volunteers from all different organizations in town. I wanted to mention, for those folks that'll be watching this on cable or rebroadcasting this, the head of our effort in terms of the implementation is a gentleman by the name of Kurt Nelson. He's a retired dentist that lives in Anthem, if any of you know Kurt. But we got help from the First Baptist Church, Word of Life Ministries, Desert Rock Church, Florence Baptist Church, Higher Dimensions Church, the Florence Unified School District, of course, the United Food Bank, the Florence Lions Club, and I wanted to specifically recognize some of our staff members that have volunteered to assist with this food bank effort. Obviously, Chief Walls, Hezekiah Allen, Tanya Jacquet, Patricia Buchanan, and Glenn Jones. So Glenn Jones, who's one of our custodians of the town, he's the one that is going to coordinate the efforts with the food bank on behalf of the town volunteers. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add on that? Seeing none. Some brief updates on some project of interest. I think that council and the public all know that, for the most part, the construction's complete on the Silver King balcony. The last remaining thing is some light fixtures that are on back order, but once we get those light fixtures up, we'll be good there. One of the things I wanted to mention to the public, as I've been talking for a couple of years about, the need to replace the Gila River Bridge on State Route 79. That project has been delayed by a year. It's now in 2023. And in terms of the smart meters installation in our Smart City project, we've installed over 500 meters now. So even though it's really, really hot, PMI has had three different crews out doing meter install. I believe they're done with all the commercial meters. They're doing all of the residential meters now. Our Smart City system is working fantastically. We're having no problems and a very successful project. A couple other things that I wanted to mention, I guess there's just one more. At the next council meeting, we'll be doing a short presentation on a couple of vehicles, but I kind of jumped the gun and sent it out to council today, so I might as well follow it up with, and one of the council members made a statement about it before the meeting. We've received our drunk pedal cart, and it's over at the police station now. They call it a drunkbuster, but it comes in conjunction with some specialized goggles that you wear in it to teach kids about the dangers of drinking and driving. And it's actually quite neat, and maybe we'll have that to show everybody what that looks like at the next meeting, but we did get delivery of our cart. Any questions on my report?
No, your report was really comprehensive too, and going in it, I noted the program going out with our library and all of the amazing services that we are offering to the community, and especially our seniors. Our seniors have been asking about what programs have been available, so you did a great job detailing them out. If you just want to add them here as well?
Oh, sure. Hezekiah and the team are doing fantastic things, and there's more things to come. We've got two other things that we're working on right now that we want to release in the near future to help during these times. From the library perspective, of course, we're continuing the ability to our curbside service at the library, the printer-on service, as well as ask librarian. The new one that was just recently added is books on wheels. And so, to your point, Mayor, specifically books on wheels is set up for those folks that are homebound, the folks that we received the 5310 grant for transportation, and those folks that receive meals on wheels, or what's known federally as the Congregate Meal Program. Those folks now, we have a process in place where also when they're delivered their meals, we can bring them library books, and they can return their library books and what have you during this tumultuous time, if you will. The next one that is one of them that we're working on right now is the Tutor on Demand. So we're hearing a lot of things about kids at home and doing the electronic learning and how they need help, and it's harder to get in touch with your teacher, et cetera. So we're actually seeking some volunteers, reach out to the library staff if you're interested, but we're seeking some volunteers to help us with tutoring on on-demand. At the senior center, we are still doing the curbside service for meal pickup. We are still doing our Congregate Meal Program as well as shopping for seniors, which continues to be successful. It was a lot busier a couple of months ago, but there are some folks that are still utilizing that service successfully. We have continued with our, what we call our telephone reassurance program, which are calling the folks on our list and making sure they're okay, and seeing if they need anything, or if there are any issues that they need help with. Give a lift program is limited at this time to medical rides, but it's still going. They're going to try to do Zoom phone bingo, because bingo is one of our favorite activities that we have at the senior center. So staff is working to do Zoom bingo, I think that's kind of cool. And the other one that Hezekiah and the staff have been developing, that I gave them the go-ahead on, is trying to do Zumba in the park. So they're working out Zumba in the park, and everybody's gonna be socially distanced, there's gonna be white circles painted in the park where each individual person stands to make sure that everybody's distanced, and try to do Zumba in the park. Take and make kits have been very successful. I think that a couple of council members might have taken part in the take and make kits, which is great. Our rec on the Go program is something that we've continued to do in allowing folks to utilize equipment. We've got the Corona Kick rocks, the durable medical equipment program is still going, and we're working on, similar to Zumba in the park, we're working on yoga in the park, as well as the ability to do sand volleyball. So those are a couple of the new things that are going to be released here in the near future. So we're trying to be creative, we're trying to really provide some activities that are fun and get people exercise. I would be remiss, I know that Lisa's not on the phone today, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the Painted Rock program. I don't know what Hezekiah calls that, but that's been tremendously successful, where people take rocks and they paint them, and they put them out in areas of the town and take a picture with it. I have to, I cannot tell a lie, Lisa took a bunch of rocks home a couple of weeks ago and painted these rocks real pretty, and went and put them out at Post and Butte, and somebody came and stole them all. So she was upset that she lost her rocks. So she's been out walking the park, trying to track down where her rocks might have went. I can tell you from personal experience, two weeks ago, I got to work early one Monday morning, before anybody was there, and I went up to our back door, and somebody, I don't know, somebody from the community took a rock and painted it black, and then put stars all over it and put it at our back door so that we would see it. And I didn't realize what it meant at the time. I guess I must not be the sharpest knife in the drawer, but one of the staff people had to tell me, "Well, they're telling us that we're rock stars." I went, "That's pretty cool." So the Rock Star Rock is still at our back door. Any other questions, Mayor?
I saw we also received a grant for the fire department for something called a thumper.
Yes, so it's been really interesting in these COVID times that these grants seem to pop up, and you have like two weeks to apply, and they're usually federal in nature. A grant popped up, and our fire department wasn't sure if our request would comply with the grant requirements, but we submitted the grant anyway, and we were funded. So maybe at a future council meeting, once we receive the equipment, we'll bring it in. But it's essentially a system that's placed on the patient's chest, and it does compressions for you. So instead of our firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics having to do chest compressions, we now have, or will have, mechanical equipment that does chest compression. So thank you for bringing that up, I forgot about that.
You had a great report, so I appreciated everything that you included.
There's lots of great things going on in Florence.
Yes. I have a quick question too, Mayor. I was just wondering, Brent, you had mentioned the food bank, and how often are they gonna be doing that? I'm sorry if I missed it.
So the way that I see it, it's two different things. So when they originally approached us, it was a distribution and storage issue. So what we as a group of volunteers wanted to do was come up with a location where the bags could be stored. And I say bags, because it was gonna be a very different type of program than a typical food bank. So instead of meats, and eggs, and cheese, and milk, and dry goods as part of a typical distribution from a food bank, it was gonna be just dry goods, and they were gonna get us like 500 boxes or 500 bags that included dry goods. We were gonna store those, and then we were gonna use our organizations to make those distributions. So one of them was gonna be the senior center for seniors that were in need. One of the groups is for the foster parents that are in our area. One of the groups was the school district, and then the individual churches. So you would come in, fill out the paperwork that United requires, because this is all federally funded food, and then you could pick up 50 bags, or you could pick up 100 bags, and then you, through your own parishioners, if you will, you would do that distribution. So that was our initial plan. But once we brought some more of the volunteers on, especially Kurt, the idea was, well, that's great, but it'd be too bad if we lost the ability for our folks in this town to be able to get the meats and the cheeses and the milk and the eggs and those types of things. So they decided, instead of United Food Bank staffing that and providing that once a month, that the volunteers would provide an opportunity once a month to do that. We would house it at the park, and it would be a traditional distribution. So now the program, even though we've only, we've only been going for a couple of weeks, we've expanded from just distribution to now distribution and traditional food bank.
Okay, so still planning it once a month is what I'm hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions with the manager's report? Okay, next up, we have item eight, which is our department reports. Are there any question or comments? Again, they're very much appreciated, very detailed, and want to say thank you for the time put into them. Item number nine is our second call to the public. Trenton, is there anybody on that has phoned in or messaged in that would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, there's two members currently called in. I've unmuted them, they're able to speak at this time if they wish to do so.
Excellent. The only thing I'll ask is that you introduce yourself, and at this time, let's go to Mr. Kevin Holden.
Mayor, Kevin is the outside legal counsel that's gonna be here for the executive session.
I understand, I saw a name pop up that was familiar to me, so thank you. All right, how about 520251? I won't repeat the rest of it, but would you like to speak? Okay.
And Miss Bonnie Periola is online as well, if she would wish to speak.
Perfect. At this time, I'll just let whoever speak up. Just open call to the public, please state your name.
Looks like we're good, Mayor.
Okay, closing call to the public, thank you so much, Trenton. Our second is number 10. This is call to the council for current event only. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm really excited about the solar project for the parking lot at the community center. This is something that's kind of been on our radar, and I was really excited to see that in the manager's report. And also, thank you so much to Chief Walls, all of the volunteers, the various organizations that stepped up to help out with the food bank distributions. I think this is gonna be a wonderful way to bring our community together. And last but not least, I want to congratulate the Main Street Fabric Company for their opening this last month. I'm hopeful that we will see a steady stream of quilters and sewers upstairs at the Silver King. So again, congratulations to everyone, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
I just want to encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow, that it's primary voting. And that's it. Everybody have a safe evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Sorry, I lost my mouse there. I think it's all been said, I am very proud of the things that we're doing here in Florence, and all the things that Brent had brought up are amazing, and I'm so glad that they're coming to fruition. And of course, get out and vote tomorrow. Hopefully, I'll see everyone at the polls.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, I would like to congratulate all the candidates that are running for office, and hopefully all win, but that's not gonna happen. So I guess we could have a runoff. I don't know, if I understand it right, for mayor, if one candidate gets more than 50%?
Plus one.
Plus one, 51%, plus one, then they're in. I don't know how it goes for the council candidates, if it's the same thing?
For council candidates, it's the same formula. You take the amount of total votes cast for that, divide by three for council, and then if any council member gets that percentage plus, or that amount plus one, then they're automatically seated.
A third plus one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and just good luck, everyone. The other thing that I would like to bring up, I talked to Brent about this, or I sent him some messages, it's been brought up to me about the striping on the streets downtown, the paint. It's not the best that could be used, and I would like to encourage us, you know, we keep talking about cleaning up downtown, and we're not doing our job, you know. It might cost us more to put down a better paint for our striping on Main Street, but I think it would be well worth the investment to help clean up, you know, Main Street. So I would like to encourage the town to do that. Other thing, I have talked to the police chief, we had some vandals in our neighborhood recently, and I suspect it's probably a follow-through of the coronavirus, because we have a lot of kids who aren't in school, they're probably getting bored and don't have anything to do. So they are egging houses and cars. One of my neighbors got his truck ruined, whole front of his house, so he's about to paint his house and paint his truck. I don't give you interest in gonna cover that or not, but he told me he wants to do that, and I heard that there was other egging that was going on. So I guess if you see kids out wandering around at night, we need to call the police, because we do have a curfew law. And I talked to the chief about it, and he said that if people report, you know, kids out after curfew, they'll go check it out. So if you see that and you have that problem, call the police. Don't call 911, call the other number, okay? So I think that's all I have, yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes. All right, thank you. Yes, and I understand staff is going to be looking at the cost regarding the striping and I agree, if we do it once and it looks nice and it lasts longer, then that's better for everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I really enjoyed everything that's happening. We have been putting a lot of plans into action, so for that, I'm thankful. The programs that Parks and Rec is coming out with. Hezekiah, you have had so many different, there you are, your name was over there and there you are, different conversations and we have some great things coming. We were in a meeting earlier today. We're looking forward to great activities and events as well as opportunities for our town. So I just want to say thank you for that, especially with the cemetery cleanup that has happened. And anytime somebody has an idea, I do appreciate the follow-up and the conversations that happen throughout.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and huge shout-out to the team over here and the crew and everybody at Town Hall for the support, so thank you.
Well, with that, tomorrow is primary election day. I do encourage everybody to make sure that you know where your polling location is. I know that there have been changes from years past. So if you have any questions, you can either visit the town site or Google Penal County Elections, "Where's my polling site?" and it will come up. If you have any questions, you can contact the Elections Department. They'll be happy to help you. I just encourage everybody to go out and do their part and vote. We do have an executive session this evening, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close out this meeting and then we'll open up another meeting. So with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We adjourn regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Have a great evening, everybody.